Give us a couple of minutes if we have to move something around on the screen. But with that being said, it's now 6:05 and I'd like to call the Lamita Planning Commission for Monday, February 13th to order. And if we can do a flag salute, Vice Chair Graff, if you can lead us in the flag salute. Everybody would please rise, put your right hand over your heart.
Follow me, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Madam City Clerk, if we can do a roll call, please?
Thank you. Is your mic on?
I believe it is, yes. Does that sound better?
I can't tell, I'm sorry. Commissioner Dever?
Yes.
Commissioner Santos?
Here.
Commissioner Steinbach? Back? He's not here in person. I don't know if he's on the Zoom call. Okay. Commissioner Stevens?
Here.
Vice Chair Graff?
Here.
Chair Camerata?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number two, oral communications. Person wishing to address the Planning Commission on subjects other than those scheduled or requested to do so at this time, please provide your name and address for the record. In order to conduct a timely meeting, a three-minute time limit per person has been established. And if there are any speaker cards? Or if anybody is online that wants to, okay. This is for something other than what's on the agenda.
I've not received anything and JP, is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak? I think the idea is for the control room to put any speakers on Zoom on the screen, if there are any, so it doesn't look like it. Thank you.
I don't see anybody. Okay. So moving right along, we will go to item three, which is the consent agenda. We have minutes from November 14th, 2022, and minutes from December 12th, 2022. Do I have a motion to approve both?
So, second.
Okay. We can do a roll call on that. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you. Commissioner Dever?
Yes.
Commissioner Santos?
Yes.
Commissioner Steinbach is not here. Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Vice Chair Graff?
Yes.
And Chair Camerata?
Yes.
Thanks.
So that passes five to zero with one absent. Okay. All right. Moving along, public hearings. We are on item number four, which is a minor conditional use permit, number one, and a site plan review, number 1217, which is a request for a minor conditional use permit to allow for shared parking located at 2159 through 2169 Pacific Coast Highway, 2177 Pacific Coast Highway, and 25622 through 25656 Narbonne Avenue, and 25636 Narbonne Avenue, and a site plan review for a one-story commercial building consisting of 3,851 square feet of commercial space located at 2177 Pacific Coast Highway in the commercial retail or CR zone and confirm the categorical exemption. The applicant is Michael Singh, and the presentation will be by Associate Planner McMoran. So if we can have the presentation?
Thank you, Chair Camerata. Tonight's presentation is going to be considered of everyone's time. The staff report went into a great deal of detail. I'm working on a technical issue as learning how to move forward.
Which is what I said at-
And buying myself some time.
Top of the meeting to give us a minute or two if we have some technical issues.
There we go. So, again. For members of the audience, the commission is trying to look on their screens for the presentation.
That's what, yeah, so if everybody can do that, and then the screen goes blank. Oh, JP? Oh, okay, it comes back up, okay. Michael still has a flat tire here, so. It's okay, give them a second. So while we're waiting, again, the technology now is supposed to advance us into the 21st century. They've done a great job of redoing the diocese and hooking all the systems up, and we did a test run, what, three weeks ago, maybe? Couple little bugs are still going to be worked out, so JP is our man on the spot here, and he'll get us up and running. You want to use this one for now?
Is it working?
Yeah, this one. You can just scroll down to presentation. Yeah, alright, JP, I got him working on this side, so come on over here, Michael. There we go. Okay.
I'm good to go.
Okay. I think we're good if we-
Is it okay now?
Yeah, well, but you got it on your screen, so we can go. So let JP do his magic. You guys have it on your screen down there? You don't have yours either? Oh, okay. Brenda, you have yours? Okay. Oh. Okay. Well. Okay, there it is. So we're good? You guys have it? Not yet? Joaquin? This one's on? Okay. Okay, so I think we're ready to go, so we're good. Everybody's got on the screen what we have on the screen, so we're good. Okay. Laura, go ahead. I'm sorry for that delay.
All right. Glad we're operational. So tonight, as the staff report and the resolution went, resolutions went into great detail, I'm going to focus on a high level, and then, of course, if there's any specific questions, I'll be available for answers. But as mentioned, we're here with, for the first minor conditional use permit to allow for shared parking between four properties. They are all owned by the same property owner. And then there's a site plan review for approximately 4,000-square-foot commercial building with 450 square feet of patio dining. So this is a current exterior photo of the 2159 through 2169 PCH property. The anchor tenant is the 99-cent store, and then there are two food service use, one to sit-down restaurant, and then the second is an ice cream use. This is 2177 PCH. It is a former bank building. It has been vacant for five years. This building is the subject of Site Plan Review 1217. And the next is a view of the buildings on Narbonne. These are both multi-tenant, um, commercial buildings. They have mostly like office and medical use, and they're both approximately a little over 4,000 square feet along, um, let me go back. Along, this is the site aerial. It is located at the corner of PCH and Narbonne. The site is served by four driveways. One two-way driveway on the easterly side of the property, split between the former Big Lots and the 99-cent store, and then three along Narbonne Avenue. The land use designation is commercial, and the adjacent land use designations are also commercial. Circulation Element has designated PCH a highway, and Narbonne Avenue is a secondary highway. Surrounding uses on Narbonne Avenue, the top picture shows multi-family billing, and on the east, I'm sorry, on the south side of PCH is a mix of uses, gas station, fast food, and then the future target and target site. To the west, at the corner of Narbonne and PCH, as Wells Fargo. The zoning for the area is commercial retail, and the purpose of this zone is to provide for regional retail needs and limited service establishments. The code prescribes development standards. In addition, the Planning Commission in 2002 adopted PCH Design Guidelines, and the project was reviewed with those guidelines as well as the prescribed development standards. The minor conditional use, um, request has a variety of uses, and those uses were categorized in the parking demand analysis as Table 3. They're proposed to share 121 spaces. If the minor conditional use permit is approved, this will result in the potential to create a 3,851-square-foot restaurant use with 450 square feet of outdoor dining in the former bank building. This is a breakdown of the percentage of uses based on their square footage. You can see, um, obviously the anchor tenant, the discount store, it's considered a retail use. It comprises more than 50% of the square footage of all the properties. And one should note, in, since this is new, the minor conditional use permit section of our code has actually prescribed conditions, and one of those conditions is they can't intensify this mix going forward. When they have new businesses come in, they can become less intense in their uses, but not more. So this image is from the parking demand analysis, and it shows there's five zones of parking. Zone A is the largest zone in front of the 99-cent store, and this parking is probably the one where overflow parking from 2177 will go, and also then the buildings on Narbonne. Those buildings each have kind of like their own pocket parking, so they certainly can have some customers come there, but again, they'll be going overflowing into the other areas, mostly Zone A, but also Zone B is a potential area for the northerly building. So the peak demand was found to be at 1:00 PM, and based on the tenant mix, there would be a need for 119 spaces. The site plan proposes 121 stalls, and staff visited at multiple times this site during peak demand time, non-peak demand time, and found that there is space in Zone A presently for, uh, there's unoccupied parking spaces. And this is what Zone A looks like. Here we are in Zone B, or a portion of the back part. The one recommendation we'll go over later is this area has a gate. It seems to remain open at, at all times, but there is some signage that we're going to be recommending for this location. Here's Zone C, right out in front of the building on Narbonne. Zone D. Zone E is 2177's parking lot. So staff has two recommendations regarding, regarding the minor conditional use permit. Two primary, let me say this, but these are the high-level ones. The first is that parking lot signs be installed along the westerly side of 2159 and along the block wall behind 2159, indicating that those spaces are available for all the properties covered in this minor conditional use permit. We want people to understand that they're not just reserved for that anchor tenant. The second is, um, there is a, there's an existing freestanding sign, which we'll discuss later in the site plan. Staff is recommending that the signage for 2177 go on, um, the 99-cent store multi-tenant sign. First and foremost, this will indicate that that parking lot is available for the new tenants, and that they can share those spaces, so they don't have to cause circulation problems looking for parking. And then we'll discuss the other reason in the site plan review. So some additional considerations. You know, the, the aisles and the parking lot areas are all internally connected. Street parking is inconvenient, so we think people will naturally park on-site. You know, there is a frequent bus line on PCH, so, and there's a bike lane on Narbonne. So we think this site is good for alternative modes of transportation as well as just vehicle modes. So on to Site Plan Review, number 1217. This is the existing, um, former bank building. It is being proposed for the identical square footage as is current, but they are going to, and the architect can speak to the alterations or the what's different and why, create a two-unit building with the proposed uses as being restaurants. It'll have a 450-square-foot patio area. The structure complies with setbacks, height requirements. Perimeter landscaping is almost entirely complied with. There are perimeter trees, and there is no change to existing circulation. The rear of this property is that large 38-foot driveway, and that's shared with the other sites, and it will remain. And here we see, um, site plan and their landscaping plan. This is a view on, from PCH. Here we are at the corner of PCH and Narbonne. Let me go back one. So the, and here we are again on, back on PCH. The staff report indicated there was a 14-foot parapet wall. What it should have said is that the building itself is anywhere from, um, 21, 22 feet high, but the canopy, there's a wall area above the canopy that ranges from nine to approximately 14 feet. Here we have the parking lot elevation. You know, again, this building is in natural colors as recommended by PCH Design Guidelines. It has, um, some natural elements built, designed into it. Staff's recommendations for the site plan. Staff, the code requires five feet of perimeter landscaping along the parking lot, and presently they're showing two almost compact stalls in this location, but no perimeter landscaping. Staff can, has recommended that they relocate those spaces to number three, and then also provide a landscape finger at the entrance, so that it kind of acts as a throat to, for vehicles to come in, and also not to cut through from the parking stalls perpendicular to the building. Staff is recommending the removal of the freestanding sign. The sign is not allowed by right. It is up to Planning Commission. You know, a collection of freestanding signs up and down a street can be more of a visual clutter than something the eye can take in and identify. In contrast, the Wells Fargo across the street has been designed in such a way that you can identify it without a freestanding sign. And then space number five is a potential, because they do have two additional stalls above and beyond the parking demand analysis. So they have the potential for some outdoor seating in this 20-foot, give or take, um, separation between the building to the east and their property. One of the reasons staff is, you know, stating that there should be the landscape perimeter along Narbonne Avenue where the compact stalls are, is because walls unfortunately become graffitied, and, um, this is a reoccurring problem. Also, the sign that is there identifying for, um, vehicle towing on the other side, it gets, it gets stickered up, it gets tattooed up, basically, and that's not the image we want for our community. Landscaping deters that, and then not having pole signs also prevents an opportunity for people to, you know, mar up our, our town. Instead, um, of the existing freestanding signs, staff, again, is recommending that the shopping center sign be used first and foremost to identify parking, but also for aesthetic reasons. We think that there's plenty of space on this sign. It could be refreshed with new signage, and, um, and again, that you're not going to see as much as one thinks when driving up and down the street. All these signs just, um, overwhelm drivers. We, this is in regard to having that landscaped fingered on Narbonne, so the top image is where you enter, and they have a 38-foot wide driveway, which is oversized. And here you see in the lower left on PCH are, there's a landscape finger as you move into the former Big Lots, and there kind of sort of is one, it's more of a curb barrier on the westerly side. Across the street is the same kind of landscape fingered condition as you drive into that parking lot area. So I think I've covered most of these, these are the high-level conditions. And we do want to say there should be no restricted parking signs, so particularly on the back gate, since this is, those 17 spaces behind the 99-cent store are part of the demand analysis and are needed for the shared parking. And so the findings for the minor conditional use permit have to do with making sure that the mix of uses, demand hours don't coincide, and we do see some variety there, like the ice cream parlor is not in high demand at the same time as the family restaurant, right? The tutoring center is not in the same high demand time as the, you know, dental office. So it does qualify there. The quantity and circulation, we feel like it's going to equal the level that's expected, whether or not there is shared parking. The nearby properties won't be adversely affected. There's pretty much not many places to go. You're going on-site. And circulation, there's a lot of interior circulation within this site, and we don't find that it'll be adversely affect the public health, safety, or welfare. The conditions of approval, the code requires a parking lot tree, and so the property should have that five-foot landscape bed, relocating the stalls, and again, creating the landscaping finger. For the site plan approval, you know, the site, except as noted in the conditions, applies with the code. It's suitable for the use intended. Restaurants are allowable uses in the zone, or retail if it should go that way. It's designed to avoid traffic congestion. It will not affect the public health, safety, or welfare. And I think, and it's consistent with the general plan, particularly, I should mention, our economic development. We would like to see this, this site revitalized. It's been a long time. So the Planning Commission has four options. First, to approve the resolution as recommended, and approve the SEQA, and find the project exempt from SEQA, approve the resolution with amended conditions, and find the project exempt from SEQA, deny the application, or provide an alternative direction for staff. Are there any questions?
Thank you for that presentation, Laura. So with that, I will ask, any questions, Monica? Okay, Joaquin? Okay, Mike?
Yes. Was there consideration given to, we know we're doing shared parking here to be able to provide enough parking. Was any consideration or thought given to utilizing Zone B for employee parking to try to keep the front areas, um, a little bit more open for the businesses directly? Was there any consideration, like, for example, the, um, on the Narbonne property, having employees use Zone B and 99-cent, or, yeah, 99-cent store employees using Zone B parking, and have the managers or the owners of those businesses ensure, or the best that they can, have their employees parked, park in Zone B? Next question I add is with regard to, there's quite a few items here that talk about, if you will, changes or concessions with regard to the original plan. And you mentioned several things, like the 30-foot driveway with the, um, landscaping finger. You mentioned the removal of the freestanding sign. What is there, has there been discussion with the applicant with regard to what is acceptable to them, and what, uh, they will or do not want to deal, you know, have the landscaping bed around the perimeter? I know that's a condition, but it doesn't talk about the 30-foot driveway, I don't think, and it doesn't talk about the freestanding sign. Have those been discussed with the applicant, and are they in agreement with that?
All right. Let me start first with the Zone B question on employee parking. Staff did discuss this internally, and putting a condition on there for us to manage, which is almost unmanageable. We do feel like this will happen organically. The northerly building is using that parking, I've observed, people are using that parking lot already a little bit. And as the new 2177 fills in, we feel like people will gravitate there. we feel like people will gravitate there, kind of on their own. And we just don't, I don't see a necessary way to monitor that as a condition.
Okay. It's also designated parking is not currently allowed by municipal code.
And with the conditions that were added, we have discussed them all with the applicant. They received the staff report in advance. The freestanding sign is not mentioned in the condition, the removal of it, I believe, because it is something that you have to authorize. And we are not recommending authorization. This is the only thing that the planning, that can get a freestanding sign are shopping centers, fueling stations, restaurants. Reason staff is recommending the removal is because it is consistent with the PCH design guidelines, not to have freestanding pole signs. It's also a question of policy going forward. Do we want every small restaurant to have their own freestanding pole sign? And how will that look and feel along our commercial corridor? So they would like to keep the sign, and they will speak to that at their presentation. With regard to the driveways, we did discuss, that is a condition in here. And that is, again, also in the PCH design guidelines. And if you'd like, I can find it for you, Mike. I can find it for you. In the minor, CUP Resolution Number 13. It's called a landscape buffer.
Okay, does that answer all your questions, Mike?
Yes, thank you.
Brenda, any questions? Okay, I had one question. If you can go back, it's on page eight of the actual, our packet. The building parapet wall that you were talking about? If you can redirect me to where that is on the plan?
Sure, you know what? It may not be shown in my PowerPoint, the elevation with dimensions, but...
I mean, it's part of what the applicant is proposing, but I wondered where that was going to go.
I'm going to pull it up for you.
Okay.
Everyone.
All right.
We have to go into my, it's not dimensioned. Commissioner Graff, could you repeat your question? I mean Commissioner, Chair Camerata.
Oh. Where was that wall, is it on this page here?
Are you, the building elevation or the block wall?
The block wall.
The block wall exists presently on the Narbonne side in front of those parking stalls.
Right.
And down towards the trans... So what's shown on this plan is the transformer location. And so that existing wall that had the graffiti on the top, and on the side, and on the other side, is right along that edge.
Narbonne, it's right along Narbonne, right? Yeah, so, okay, so that's where they're going to put the new wall.
We recommend landscaping.
With landscaping, okay, I wanted to make sure I was in the right area then. Okay, then that's the only question I had for now.
Mr. Chairman, on this slide you have up now, has the applicant agreed to these items? Other than the freestanding sign?
Applicant will be yes.
Right, that's what I meant, yes. So if there's no further questions, I'd like to bring the applicant up, and he can make his presentation. Believe, is this Mr. Tseng?
Yes.
If you would come to the podium and give your name and information to the clerk for the record, please. And you have three minutes, so...
Hi, my name is Michael Tseng. I'm from the project architect. On behalf of the owner, Lisa Lau and Robert Ton and G and A LLC. So the owner has started piece by piece in acquiring the property since 1980s. So right now, they started to feel that the center is updated. So they wanted to start on a very small corner to start updating it. So see what the leasing can be. As the staff have indicated, that the building has been vacant for the last five years. So it's due to all these factors where the building's interior ceiling height is only nine foot tall. So it's not really a habitable space for any restaurants or anything. So, and then also the building is designed with two different structural systems. So there's really no way we could keep a wall or something doing renovation. And also to the back of the exit to PCH, there's really actually eight or eight to nine inches great difference between PCH and the building. So you see the ramp going down to PCH. So what the owner has decided to do is let's just take down the building, build a state-of-the-art building with a 14 or 15-foot tall clear inside of the building. And then the existing building also, I forgot to mention, was that all the HVAC was on top of the roof, as well as the duct system. So it doesn't really comply with any green code. Even though it's not a violation of the code, but it doesn't save any energy. So what the building, the owner wants to do is bring a state-of-the-art building, even though it's only under 4,000 square foot. And the construction cost has skyrocketed recently. And we had it priced for 1.8 million dollars just to build this building. So not only that, the owner will also put in a charging station, electric car charging station, to kind of just bring everything up to code, one parcel at a time. So with the staff's help, special thanks to Brianna and Laura. We've been working together for the last five months to bring it to this point. And we've also hired a traffic engineer to do the shared parking study. And it's all because of the landlord wants to do, make this building more 21st century. And it's more desirable to lease out the building. So the only thing that we are, sort of, wanted to get commissioners to help us was that the corner side is very important to the owner. And they wanted to keep the corner side for advertisement or things like that. I did a quick calculation on the south wall, which is the rear side of the wall. If we were able to put signage on the back of the wall for two tenants, the total square footage for the signage would only be 74 square foot. So, and the rendering, if you see the rendering from the elevation, on the south elevation, what it was shown is at least 100 square feet. So I'm not sure the size of, the signage on the building would be substantial enough as big as the Wells Fargo sign. And I'm not sure if that 74 square foot of signage area for two tenants will be enough to...
Okay, let me interrupt you for one second. Could you bring up that? I don't know what page it is, if you can show the photo of the, I think it's going to be probably this one right here, yeah, this one right here. So we can see the signage on the building, and we can also see the proposed freestanding.
These two, as shown on the building rendering on the south elevation, it's about 102 square feet, as I mentioned. So as I measured this morning, so according to the city signage ordinance, we're only able to do 10% of the wall surface.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is that it?
Yeah, I think that was the most important item from a client, and I just spoke with them this morning. And they want us to thank the staff and thanks the commissioner for considering this.
Well, thank you for your presentation. I actually am looking forward to something like this. We haven't had anything like this in a long time. It looks pretty doable in my mind, but we have to go through all the, you know...
Yeah, and the building actually designed was adding the patio was actually...
Between.
You know, the industry said that restaurant is the new anchors. So not only that you have 99 cents as an anchor, and maybe, you know, sometime later, if things change, that will all be renovated for new tenants or stuff like that. But they're current, so far they're a great tenant paying their rent and stuff like that.
Good.
So that's what my client wants to focus on was this.
Well, thank you, no. Thank you for your presentation, yes.
Chair Camerata, can I correct something? So Narbonne and PCH are both fronts, and they both get 15% of the wall area, not 10%.
Yeah, it's seven and a half per.
No.
That's what you had.
They each get 15, they're each a front.
Above that, it says 15%, so I just wanted to make sure that that was the figure. 15%, correct?
15%.
Okay. On each side, yes. Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tseng. I'm going to bring it back to the commission if there's any further questions. We'll start with Monica, do you have any questions, comments?
No, not right now, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Joaquin?
No questions, just, it's a welcomed project, awesome.
Okay. Mike?
Yeah, have you, has the applicant had any discussions with staff with regard to possibly, we allow in certain cases, instances where you can increase your signage size on the buildings. We've done that before. Have you had any discussions with them on that? Because I, the reason, excuse me, the reason I ask, I am really opposed to the freestanding sign. Because if you let that happen, it can just make things really cluttered along those arterials there. And that's why I say you, one of the main things you brought up was the fact of the visibility with regard to the signage and everything. That's why I asked if you had any discussion with them on that.
No, we have not started talking about signage program for the building or things that could change. So that was my client's sort of direction to me, was that how can we keep it?
Okay. Is that it, Mike?
That's it.
Okay, Brenda, anything?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. I agree with Commissioner Graff regarding signage on the building, other than the tall post, because you're going to have a monument sign for the whole property. And the other thing that, when I was there, the two restaurants, Cold Stone and the Nook, there's two access doors, because I see you're planning on outdoor seating and taking away those parking spots at the end, according to this. While the Nook doesn't use that back access door, it's been blocked off from the interior of the business, Cold Stone gets a delivery through that back door weekly. And if we take away that area for them to access that door, I think that would be not a good thing to do. I mean, that's...
So if I'm understanding you right, if you look to the left, there's a hatched area on the backside of 2169. That is going to be a subterranean grease receptor, and that's loading also. So that's, that is actually, you're right, Monica, I mean Brenda. And good, good, good point. They will be able, if I, the architect can speak to the design, but there's the stairs to the back door adjacent to the trash area. And then that hatched area, again, where the grease receptor is with, you know, it'll be at grade and to the parking lot. Michael, is there anything you want to clarify?
Yeah, Laura was correct. So the striping that you see actually is for loading for 2177 and 2169. So there's two staircases or stoops behind 2169. Those are preserved as is. So we're not blocking any of the rear access.
That was just my concern. I'm always concerned about the people next door. And then I don't know if it's been addressed or if it even has anything to do with this. But several times when I was there, it might just be a code issue with people making a left turn out of that driveway onto Narbonne. And you know they do it, even though they cross the double yellow line to do it. Is there any way that we can have a sign there that says, "No left turn"? I mean, common sense would tell you no left turn, but we all know how that works.
Okay. We will make note of that to our Public Works Department.
Okay. And that's all I have.
Okay, great. And I can kind of piggyback on that, because if you, this has got nothing to do with this project, but real quickly, Kaia has the no-left turn onto Crenshaw from that parking on Crenshaw, and today there was an accident there. So left turn into the, oh, anyway, just FYI. Signs don't, people don't pay attention to signs, so just something to consider. Yeah. Okay, no further questions? Oh, you do have a question? Go ahead, Mr. Santos, go ahead.
Laura, I have a question for you. As far as a freestanding sign, if they had decided to just remodel it as is, without tearing the building down, could they have used that sign?
Super interesting question. So our code actually has an amortization period for freestanding signs. The ordinance was adopted in 1979. It has not been consistently enforced. Staff has been applying it recently to the cream pan location. They used to have a pole sign on Narbonne, but without the topper. And we said you have to remove it. The same was true of the Sizzler property on PCH. When it converted uses, they had to remove that long, that 30-foot-high sign. So without planning commission's affirmative approval, it cannot remain there. But again, they have the other shopping center sign. We think that's far better because it, again, identifies this as a cohesive area under one kind of parking arrangement.
Thank you.
Laura? Did I correctly understand you to say, we have to approve that freestanding sign? Or we have to say, "No, you have to remove it"?
You only have to approve it, the request from the applicant, and we will have to adjust the resolution. It is by, it is not allowed by right.
It would have to be approved as part of this. Otherwise, it has to come down. But do we have to say it? Okay, but does this request it to be there?
Not the resolution.
No, this is a, that's going to be separate, correct?
The resolution does not recommend the freestanding sign.
Right.
And therefore, without your affirmation or your approval of it. David, if you want to use the legalese, it has to go.
Yeah, what Laura said. Approval, approval is the legal. Yeah, if it's not approved, then it's not allowed to be there.
Okay, I just wanted to try to understand here. Do we have to put a condition in the resolution that says they cannot install it or?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
It's already, it's already in the recommendation. Yeah, it's in there.
I know it's in the recommendation, but what, it's in the code. So if we approve the resolutions as they currently are, then they have to remove it, is that correct?
That's correct, right.
Thank you, very confusing, but thank you.
Okay, so with that said, let me just run through last questions. Was that everything, Joaquin? Okay. Monica, anything else before we go? Michael, anything else?
No.
Brenda? Okay, so we can close out your presentation, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Thank you very much, Mr. Singh. So at this time, we can open up the public comment section. Do we have any? Oh, we do, is that Mr. Kivitt, I believe? Mr. Kivitt, good evening, I can't see you unless I'm, got eyes in the back of my head.
I just turned my video feed on.
Okay, hold on one second, let me hit the volume down because you're like Moses speaking to the Grand Canyon here, hold on a second. Linda, can you get JP to turn that down just a shade?
Usually I'm speaking too softly.
There you go, there you go. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, anyway, I had a chance to follow through on the full presentation here. I'm very familiar with the property and the adjoining, you know, the immediate site and the adjoining properties owned by the applicant. I think this will be a great benefit for that center and for Lomita and the residents to get a couple of good viable restaurants there. It was a bank for years, but you know, things have changed in the financial world and banks or financial institutions are, you know, closing a lot of their locations. But I think overall, I'm in favor of the shared parking, I like that idea. I think if it could be encouraged, I don't think I'd want it, you know, you know, in the statutes, what have you, that they have to park, you know, employees, what have you, behind the 99 cent store. But if it could be encouraged, I think the employers could be left to do that over time because that'll free up more space for customers in front of the stores where the customers like to park. And I do agree that the street parking is very inconvenient in that location. So you've got to encourage, you know, use, full use of the parking area. I do like the design images that were shown. I think it's going to be a real nice looking building. And one thing I would recommend, which is different from what the staff recommendations are, is that the freestanding sign be allowed to stay. I think that'd give you some excellent exposure along Narbonne and also traffic that's on Pacific Coast Highway heading eastbound. They'll be able to see that sign and readily identify the restaurants that are located there at the property. And I do also like the idea of the patio seating. I think that's something that'll be appreciated. I think it's well-located, it's on the east side of the building. So it'll be, you know, basically in a calmer area blocked by wind, largely by the building. Get the nice, you know, sun in the morning. I think that's a good idea. And regarding any landscaping, I don't like the, I think in some areas there's some perimeter, low perimeter walls around the exterior of the parking lot and such. I don't like those. I agree that they can attract graffiti and such. I do like the idea of installing some landscaping immediately adjacent along the sidewalks and such within the property. But be, I've spoken on this before, if you could keep the lines of sight, especially for ingress egress, especially egress from the property so that people leaving the property can see the traffic flows and such and keep it as safe as possible. So just, you know, immediately adjacent to those driveways, keep any plantings nice and low so that, you know, it doesn't cause any undue traffic issues. But overall, I like the project and I'd like to see it move forward, thank you.
Madam, no, okay. So we can close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. Oh. I have a question and I'm not sure if it really is relevant to this project, but as we all know, we just lost another tenant in that complex, right? And they do have a big sign, the freestanding sign in the parking lot. So I don't know how that impacts the signage as well. Just, do we have any knowledge of what's happening with that empty store now?
Actually, on your agenda, the very last item, we have an update on all of.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay.
No tenant has been.
Okay, no, I'm just curious, sign is wise because they have that freestanding, if that goes, is that going to change? So just, you know.
There is an easement agreement for common area between those two properties.
Right.
And it was noted in the staff report. And so anything that's not a building is a common area.
Right.
And so hence, that sign is a multi-tenant sign that formally had big lots on it as well as the other tenants.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we, I had that in my head, okay. I think with that, we're ready to bring it back to the commission for a decision and a vote. So with that being said, do we have a motion for public?
I know that we follow staff's recommendation and offer resolutions of providing minor conditional use permit number one and site plan review number 1217, subject to the findings and conditions to confirm the categorical exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Santos, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Commissioner Stevens on a second. Commissioner Stevens. Madam City Clerk, if we could do a roll call on that, please?
Ms. Dever?
Yes.
Commissioner Santos?
Yes.
We're noting the absence this evening of Commissioner Steinbach. Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Vice Chair Graff?
Yes.
And Chair Camerata?
Yes.
So that's five zero passes.
Okay, very good, thank you everybody for that one. All right. Moving on. We're going to go to public hearing number five, which is a minor conditional use permit number two and site plan review number 1218, a request for a minor conditional use permit to allow for reduced parking and a site plan review for a 719 square foot outdoor dining canopy located at 24516 Narbonne Avenue, Suite 100 in the downtown commercial DC zone and confirm the categorical exemption. The applicant is Mr. Bob Lake and we have a presentation by Community and Economic Development Director Brianna Ridge. So if you would be kind enough to give us a presentation?
Yes, so, again, this will be a brief presentation.
Okay.
Can you hear me? Okay. All right, so there has been reported by the county sheriff a decrease in driving under the influence and there's also an increase, hand in hand, in the use of Uber and Lyft as it is a site for alcoholic consumption. And so safe practice is to not be the one driving. The applicant also has reported that a number of their patrons do walk there. There's residential nearby. On top of that, it's kind of a unique situation because when this business was originally approved, there was no parking provision for this use. And so the city adopted at that time, in conjunction with the approval of the brewing company, an actual parking requirement for breweries. And now it's been used at this location as well as another in the city. And so staff visited again during off-peak and peak hours. And the photos you see are during peak hours. And noticed still unoccupied spaces. And that is despite the fact that there are two temporary tents there. It kind of acted like a trial and they are twice the size of the proposed tent. And will free up more parking once they're removed. And that's what I just described. And so it's the same two application requests actually as the previous one ironically. To, but this one is not for shared parking, it's for a request for a reduced parking. So they would like to basically maintain the area that the north tent is doing. So replacing three existing parking spaces with canopied seating to add supplementary striping on the southeast corner of the lot that is currently gravel and to surface it. And then there's two requests that staff does not recommend for approval. And the applicant will speak towards, you know, their request there. But they requested to replace the two existing parking spaces just south of the proposed canopy with a fenced-in loading area. This does render the space permanently unusable for patrons. And the staff foresees that if loading is going, you know, there's a truck on the way, they can put cones out, whatever it might be, to allow for loading. And then when it's not being used for loading, you know, normal hours, they would be available for patrons. The second is a new curb and chain fencing on the southerly, southerly edge of the site that's depicted in purple. It's, it looks like it has, the request is there just for a post and a curb. And the staff recognizes that has the ability to be chained off and sees this as contrary to the request justification that they can use, patrons sometimes park in the bank parking lot. This is what that looks like now, again, kind of a trial run's been going on. So based on what's there now, they do require 32 parking spaces. With staff's recommendation, which does not include that enclosed two extra spaces, that leaves 23 proposed. So there's a deficiency of nine spaces and that's the reduction. Staff recommends approving, their request would be 11 spaces reduction. It does not touch the handicap parking. A further justification that you see the table in the staff report is that there are 38 additional on top of the 26 at the site. There's 38 additional nearby. And that looks like the public parking lot across the street. The 245th Street has many spaces along it, free parking. And then this is where people sometimes park, not at the direction of the brewery, but they do. It could happen. Additional considerations, there is no other location on the site for additional dining because it's right up on the property line right now. This location is the closest to the bar and kitchen and the existing rear entry door. It expands business activity in downtown Lomita and prevents the spread of airborne illnesses. We know we just, you know, coming out of a pandemic, this has been popularized, more outdoor dining. And like I mentioned, there was a trial run and they did not report any issues. So it does comply with all the development standards, the structure itself, the canopy. It's open air, it does have a roof and it slants towards the building. And this will help in shielding any additional, you know, excess noise towards that residential that's under construction. So staff does have one edit, the applicant advised us they actually close at 7:00 PM on Sundays. And so staff does recommend allowing, amending the resolution to allow 7:00 PM Sunday nights usage of this space. So we have findings required for approval within the resolution and won't walk through them because Laura just did. The standard condition it seems is that crimes shall be reported to the sheriff's department upon occurrence. And then the additional staff conditions on top of the other standard conditions is that, once again, that drive aisle shall remain as is and staff does not recommend approval of the additional curb and post for locking the connection to the alley. And that the proposed fencing shall align the perimeter of the canopy structure only and any direct connections to the existing building and to not, staff recommends not including the extra two parking spaces for loading to be fenced in. With the site plan review, there's three additional ones. One is that it does remain in compliance, which it is proposed as within compliance, but that it does remain in compliance with the outdoor dining ordinance. And that the sidewalk gate shall comply with ADA design guideline, or design requirements and that the use of new space, once again, limited to 9:00 PM nightly, which are consistent with their existing hours. And 7:00 PM on Sundays is staff's amendment there. So you available for questions and you are able to approve, approve with conditions, deny or provide further direction. And the applicant is here tonight.
Okay, thank you. Mike?
Yes. With regard to the resolutions. I found that, where did it go, okay. That on page two of the conditional use permit, the subparagraph A, the third paragraph in subparagraph A, it says condition of approval number 22. I think it should be 13.
Okay, yeah, it should refer to that, thank you.
Yeah, it should be 13 and then approval of 23 should be 14.
Right, yeah. In session, they should be amended.
Okay. A question on the general project conditions. Number nine. It says that a permit shall be obtained for any interior modifications that have been authorized by this conditional use permit. We're not authorizing any interior, are we?
That's correct.
So it should be.
It's a standard condition.
I'm sorry?
If they were to request that, it's just a standard condition for all such projects.
That's a standard condition worded that way?
Yes. That has not, the only ones that are not stated are the, if you look towards the bottom where it says planning conditions, numbers 12, 13, 14.
Okay. On the, on planning, excuse me, planning condition 13, it says that the chain at the south end, blah, 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 are not recommended in order to maintain circular, should say are not approved?
We can make that change if you'd like. It would be the same thing, but we can do that.
And the same, same thing on, in paragraph two of the. site review plan. The third paragraph, it talks about approved, recommended rather than approved.
Yes, same language.
Right. It's just, to me, it's just a clarification thing, more so than not recommended, because if it's not recommended, then, I don't know. Anyway, so that's my comments. Thank you.
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. I believe we will now have the applicant come to the podium and make his presentation. So, Mr. Bob Lake, if you'd be kind enough to come up, a little serve. Nice to see you again. If you would give your name and address to Deputy City Clerk for the record, then you have three minutes.
Yes, my name's Bob Lake, and I've got the Business Burna Daylight Brewing Company at 24516 Narbonne Avenue, Suite 100. I didn't realize I was going to be limited to three minutes, so.
Well, they changed it, so. I'm sure you could make it kind of quick.
I'll run through this as fast as I can.
Yeah.
I, I think maybe we could, we can probably speed through this. The first slide's pretty much, we talked about. I think the second slide is the same, and it's, all the slides, the different slides show what we're doing. I think what I would like to do is talk about the amendments that I would like to see based on the special conditions that were provided. And the numbering, I wasn't quite sure what, because there was 13, 14, and one, and then there was 21 through 25 in a further set. So, I numbered mine 21 through 25, and a cuffed number 13 and 14. But anyways, 21 is acceptable to us all. It's basically, outdoor dining shall comply with Lomita Municipal Code. 22, that's where the, where the drive into, say, the, the south into the fitness center parking area. There was what was called a throat that was kind of like an island for landscaping and then chains and, and guard posts. The, I could do without the chain and guard posts, that's fine. The, the island part, the throat, that was there to slow down traffic, because in my opinion, if, and it's really, it's based on if we close the alley. So, I hear there's question on if they're going to close the alley or not. If they're not going to close the alley, I'm fine with not doing any of this, the throat, the chain, the guard post, or anything. But if they close the alley, I truly believe increased traffic will come through our parking lot, through the credit union parking lot, and try to make a turn westbound onto Lomita Boulevard, rather than trying to make that turn on 245th and Lomita. So, we put that throat in to slow down that anticipated traffic. So, if we don't close the alley, mute point. If they do close the alley, I would highly recommend us putting that throat in to slow down the traffic. On 23, that's the fenced area to the south of the canopy. And, and with that, again, for me, it's, it's very important. And you'd have to see the layout of the building. But what we're doing is, is the exit, entry and exit of that fenced area, or the canopy, is through the brewery, through the roll-up door, into that canopied area. And if we were to eliminate that, I would have to have a pedestrian gate on the north side of the roll-up, and that would have to stay open. That now makes it hard for me to control people coming in and out without us knowing. The whole idea is for them to come in through the front entrance and then into the, into the canopy. So, if we modify that gate, or that railing, I lose that ability to control that. It also, if you look, if you were going to have those two areas as parking areas, a car would theoretically be able to park right next to the railing. And for us, that feels a little uncomfortable, too, where with the gated area, it gives you kind of a buffer zone, and the first car that could be parked would be to the south of that railing, and there'd be a buffer zone. And the other thing, too, that I did not put in this write-up was that I believe there's a need for, if you, if, when you park, that you have to have some open space. And if there's a car parked right next to the railing, then they don't have that open space. So, by us having the railing, it, it provides the open space for all the other, the cars. It also does provide for dedicated shipping and receiving. We get, we get shipments in every day. We do try to get them in before opening hours, but, but it happens every day. And we would have to somehow barricade that off, because people show up. And we quite frequently get people that park in the parking lot that aren't associated with the brewery. They could be visitors from upstairs. They could be people from the credit union. They could be people at the fitness center. So, we would have to monitor that as well, because that is our main, our main area for shipping and receiving. And so that would, could be a problem. And, and the, it also, another note that I didn't have on there, was that it also provides handicap access. If, if you look, if we had the, if we had to remove that railing, you would have, the handicap access has access to the tasting room. They have access to our west storefront. They have access to our north patio. But they would not have access to the, what we call the east canopy, because there's a curb there. With the, with the railing around the ramp, they could go down the ramp and into that canopied area. So, it also provides ADA access for that canopy area. And then, last but not least, in all honesty, when we are busy, we could roll out temporary seating. You know, we have those barrels on wheels and stools, and we could roll out the barrels and the stools and use that for additional seating. With what we're doing and our proposal, like Brianna had said, we're eliminating that south canopy. And so that is, that square footage that we're losing on a Friday night, we fill that up. And so this is our means of trying to find a happy medium, where we've got the canopy to the north and a little bit additional seating when it's busy in that fenced area. So, for me, very important to have that fenced area. On 24, it's acceptable, it's with the sidewalk gates to be ADA compliant, and that's very easy. And then 25, for us, the, the only thing I would like to change there is, right now, we are closed at 6:00 PM on Sundays. But that's because of the winter hours. Once daylight savings hits, we change that to 7:00 o'clock. So, we would like to have the 6:00 o'clock changed to 7:00 o'clock. The 9:00 o'clock on Fridays, we can live with that. It'd be maybe a little problematic to manage, because we open to, we stay open until 10:00 on, on Fridays. But we could manage that, and we're thinking that we would also put signs in that dining area saying that seating there is only till 9:00 in the evening. But definitely would need, would like to have the 7:00 for Sundays, so that when we do change to daylight savings, we can, we can keep that open. And that's, that's really the gist of, the gist of my presentation, so.
For a second there, because I want to ask some questions of Brianna. But do we have any questions, bringing it back to the commission? Do we have any questions, Monica?
Yes. Have you had any complaints from any of the surrounding area from noise from the canopies or people outside at all?
No, surprisingly. We, you know, now, I can't say there's never been complaints, right? But I have not personally heard of complaints. We have been, we have not been told of complaints.
Right.
So, so no. In fact, you know, the only complaint that I've ever had that I know of through noise or what have you was, we have an underground grease interceptor that needs to be pumped out twice a year. And we went through a different supplier. They came in, they were supposed to be there at 7:00 in the morning. They came in at 3:00 in the morning, and it was a 40-foot vacuum truck. And so, one of the upstairs residents, I was there, because they called me. So, I say, hey, it was supposed to be 7:00, but I zoomed on over here. And so she opened her, her door and said, "Really?" And I apologized and said it would not happen again. But outside of that, we, we have not had any complaints. In fact, we even, I asked people regularly, and it says, "Are you all right with parking?" I said, "Yeah, we just walk and we're fine." You know, it's down the street or wherever, we've walked and we're fine. But I have, I know of no complaints from residents or businesses.
I'm sure they would come to you directly if they were that upset.
You would hope so, yeah.
Or they would be here tonight.
And the canopies you're, you're building now are going to help with the noise even more than what you have there now, correct?
Yes, yeah.
Well, it's an improvement from what.
It's definitely an improvement. These things are looking pretty tacky.
So therefore, to me, 9:00 on Friday sounds good, and 7:00 on Sunday. What, what's the difference if you're doing an improvement and have no problems?
Correct, yes.
With the time?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm, and I'm not sure if you noticed, but, you know, with that, the canopy, and we have pull-down shades, but then the railing also has fabric panels on them. So, that will cut down noise as well.
Okay.
Okay. Joaquin, any questions, comments?
No.
Okay. Mike, anything?
Yeah. Do you, or I guess last year during daylight savings time, were you open till 7:00?
Oh, absolutely, yes. We just, we just changed to 6:00 when we switched the clocks back, what, November?
Right, right.
So, it's been 6:00 on Sundays, for just a couple of months.
Yeah. I only originally had 6:00, because I looked on.
I'm sorry?
At their hours, so.
What's that?
Because I looked on Google at the hours on Google Maps. And that's the only reason it said 6:00. And so, they're correct, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
Not in a few months.
Yeah. I, the only thing I could, that I was thinking about hours was the, when the residences behind become open, they back right up to it. That's the only thing I was thinking there. The only other question that I had was, are there specific requirements for the material that's used for the canopy? I mean, for example, is it fire resistant and so on and so forth? I mean.
Yes, yes. On the drawings, you'll see it's a fabric called fire cyst.
But I couldn't read it. It's so tiny.
Yeah, I apologize for that, but yeah.
No problem.
Yes. Yes, fire retardant and.
Okay. That's all I had, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Brenda, any questions, comments?
You know I do. Only because it deals with parking. Brianna, do you know how many parking spots are in that public parking lot across the street?
Yes, it is, it's in the table, one second. There are 23.
Okay. And how many units are they putting in behind the brewery?
How many what?
How many units are they building on the lot behind?
I don't know off the top of my head.
16.
That require two spots each? And those are onsite spots, I'm assuming?
I've been told, yeah. They, they all have, Luigi could maybe answer, but they all have double-car garages. And then I, it's my understanding that they also have onsite visitor parking.
Okay. And I apologize, but I'm, I'm like the parking savior, I guess, of Lomita. We have restaurants across the street that are going to be going in. They're going to be using parking spots. It's very limited. The canopies are already taking up, the temporary canopies, I'm assuming, are permitted, but we won't go there.
They're temporarily permitted with ABC and the city.
How many slots are they currently taking up?
Right now, they take up between the two, the two canopies, the area that's fenced off, they take up eight parking spaces.
And then anyone would take up?
Five. If, if we include the fenced area, we're five. So, we would be freeing up three parking spaces, plus paving the area to, in the southeast corner that puts in four parking spaces. Two would be visitor parking for the upstairs residents, and two would be for brewery parking.
So, you only have two spots for the residents in the building?
No, each resident has two parking spaces, and they would also get two visitor parkings for the building.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Mike, you have another question?
Yeah. On the parking, you, you're paving four spaces?
Correct.
Is there room to pave more than four spaces?
Negative.
Okay, so that, that takes up all the property that's available, then?
Correct. Without, without taking landscape, yes. And that, the landscape's required.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I wanted to know, Brianna, if you could bring up the site plan drawing, so that we can actually get clarity on exactly where we are with the parking and also with, I believe, his, I don't want to say objection, but it was item 25, I think it was, about the fence. I want to bring that photo back in there as well. So, okay, so let's talk about this picture right here. So, the circled area is where you are proposing to put that curb?
This, I brought a little pointer, but.
Well, yeah, I'm on the flip side of that, but is that?
Accurate.
Yeah, where the blue.
Which, yeah, okay.
Yes, that area right there.
The reason I bring this up is, I'm not sure, two meetings ago, we voted on closing off the Paseo there. I wanted to find out how far down does that closure go? And I know Mr. Luigi's in the audience, Mr. Shigata's in the audience, but do you know off the top of your head, Brianna, how far down that goes? Does that affect his?
It does go the full.
So, that may have some impact on that drive? If that's blocked off on, on Narbonne, you're not going to have traffic going down that Paseo anymore?
It's my understanding the, the, the development doesn't go, it stops at the trash enclosure and does not go east of the trash enclosure. For some reason, this doesn't, this doesn't show on the screen.
I don't, I don't know. I don't, I don't know how the, I don't know what the length of that Paseo is, all the way down the alley. Do you know?
It's not all the way down, but it is the length, the whole frontage of this site.
So, it does go to the end of the purple line?
No.
No.
It doesn't go that far?
No.
Okay.
To the west of that, to the west of that circle.
I think, I think there's some posts in there that are toward Narbonne, and correct me if I'm wrong, toward Narbonne from the trash enclosure that won't allow anything to go down that way.
Right.
Because they have to pull, they have to pull the trash out and roll, and roll it back to get to the truck. And that's why.
Okay.
Because we talked about that before, about putting the posts in to prevent anybody coming up that way.
So, there's posts at the front end of it. Where do the posts at the tail end of it? Is it after or right at the edge of the trash enclosure?
I think it's on the Narbonne side of the trash enclosure.
Right, so the west side of the trash enclosure.
Is that correct? Okay. Okay. I, I just want to make sure, because that does come into play with this, this pass-through right here. Okay.
Okay, now.
And then the other question was in regards to when the canopies come down, which are going to be in the, I believe in the blue. And the fence that you wanted, there was a wrought iron, what was that railing going to be? Was that just on the edge of?
That's that area right there.
Yeah, right there, okay.
Correct.
Okay. So, by doing that, we're losing?
Two.
Two spots, okay. And the others are going to be, one, two, three, four, five. So, it's right, oh, go back, go back to that picture. The one you said prior to that one.
So, your concern is the pink area would have, closest to, the blue is the new canopy?
Correct.
Okay. The pink area, the parking spot closest to that, may not have enough room for people in and out.
To open the door. That's why I was thinking about that railing right there.
Open the door, and the ADA, where's the ADA?
So, so if you can, if you can see right there, that's the roll-up door that you would go through.
Right.
If the railing is to the north of that, then you have to put a pedestrian gate in right there. And then when you enter, that's curbed. So, you don't have, you don't have a ramp in. If we have the, the railing to the south of the roll-up, then it's a ramp into that canopied area.
Can you go back to the picture, Brianna, the actual photo?
Because also, if you, if you, I might need to clarify, if we keep the railing around the two parking spaces.
Right there.
There is no railing on the south end of the canopy.
Right. So, here's the picture that we're looking at, the two canopies right now, or the tents, if you would. So, that alligator fencing is, would that be?
What's that?
If you're looking at this photo.
Correct.
Where the alligator fencing is? Is that where the?
Yes, that would, that's where, that's where the.
The railing would?
Right. And there would be, there would be a sliding gate there.
Okay.
For, for deliveries and.
Okay.
And so, staff would like to know as well, you'd be approving, if this area, if you all opt to allow it, you would just be removing those conditions from the, each of the two resolutions that are drafted? And also, you'd actually be approving a further reduction in only 11 spaces, because if it is used as additional dining space, that requires more.
Take out the one out instead of 12, it's 11, yeah.
Right. So, that, the square footage of those two spaces is included in the spreadsheet for the dining area.
Right, okay. As long as we don't lose.
So, it's already, it's already accounted for.
As long as it. As long as it meets that requirement, then we're okay. Yeah, okay, that's fine, okay, I'm good. Okay, thank you, Bob.
Okay.
Let's do one last round. Monica, any more questions at all?
No.
Joaquin? Michael?
No.
No.
Brenda? Okay, thank you for the presentation, Bob.
All right, thank you, and thank you, Brianna, for getting us to where we are today. It's much appreciated.
So we will now open up the public hearing, and I don't know what happened to... Oh, there you are, I can't see you at the screen, I thought you walked out. Linda, do we have any speaker cards on this, or anybody in the audience that would like to come up and speak, or, oh, Mr. Kivitt, you're here. Okay. Do we want to have Mr. Kivitt speak first since he's on my screen right in front of me? This is kind of weird, to be honest with you, it's just like, wow, okay, he's right there. I guess we can start. Mr. Kivitt, any comments, questions?
Yeah, well, a few comments, and I got to just start off. I think we're very fortunate here in Lomita, got our small-town atmosphere. And in this situation, we have a business owner, we got a great property owner, and a lot of great customers that really appreciate this location. I mean, it's kind of like the Cheers of the neighborhood where, you know, people can walk over, have a beer, walk home, and, I mean, it's really an asset for the community. My first thought was that the loading area, I didn't like it. But after the comments from the applicant and such, I think it's a good idea. I actually walked the site tonight at 5:30. And the public parking, I only counted eight cars parked in there. I counted 24 spaces, I might have been off a space, but I only counted eight cars in there. And when I walked through the lot at burning daylight, there was a number of empty spaces in the back there. So I don't think parking is going to be an immediate issue. And I like the idea that if, you know, that they do get it fenced back there, that they can control the access into the property, into the business. And that's real good for the serving staff and for, you know, the owners overall to be able to control, you know, just the flow into the business. I think that's, on second thought, I really do like that as far as fencing off the parking area. Not the parking, the loading area, and having the flexibility there. I think Sundays until 7:00 PM is fine. I walk that by there almost every day in the early evening, and it's a very friendly type of location. I've never ever heard any ruckus behavior, what have you. And I think it's something, a business that fits well into that immediate vicinity. I'm involved with other property on the overall corner there, Lomita and Narbonne. In fact, we just signed a lease today for one of the businesses. But I think they're a great asset. Let's see, I do like the idea that the canopy, they've given forethought that it's, you know, a fire-resistant canopy. And I think that's pretty much it. Overall, I'm in favor, but I would like the ability, I think, for them to fence off that back and just control the access into the business and give the overall flexibility to the site. And thank you very much.
Public hearing, and we'll bring it back to commission. I will run through last Q and A. Monica, any last questions or comments?
Yeah, I just think that changing the operating hours should go back to the original, 10 o'clock on Friday and seven on Sunday, with no complaints, I think it's very reasonable.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Joaquin? Penny? Michael?
I agree with...
I agree with Monica.
Okay, Brenda?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the hours, I mean, that's pretty reasonable. My only concern is that the state has told us that we don't have to provide parking in a city that needs parking. And every single person that comes before us wants reduced parking. And it's, you give and you give and you give, and at what point do we just say, okay, well, you know, we're going to go back to horses because there's no place to park them? That's my only concern with the flow.
Okay. Well, with that said, then I would entertain a motion for item number five.
I'd like to make a motion, but it has some conditions to it. One is the condition that we allow opening on seven o'clock Sunday.
May I interrupt you for one second? Brianna, can you bring up Mr. Lake's four or five points on his rebuttal to the conditions? And then you could use those as a...
Right.
Okay. Right there, there you go, okay.
There we go, okay. Back up here. I'm saying that, I'm saying that condition 22 stays as it is. There will be no, would be no new curb. The hours would change, and we would allow the fenced-in area for the two, the pink ones, for the pink parking spots.
To do so, you would, in your recommendation, you would, or your decision, your motion, strike condition number 14 in the CUP reso. You would strike condition number 23 in the site plan reso.
Excuse me, number 14?
Yeah, it's number 14 in the CUP reso.
CPU, yeah.
It's in both, so.
Let me get back to 14. Oh, yeah, 14 was to propose fencing.
Yes, and you would also strike number 23 in the site plan reso, site plan review reso. And also in the site plan review reso, on number 25, you would change it to 7:00 PM Sundays and 10:00 PM Fridays, if you so wish.
Right. But I think what Brianna's saying is that you would strike 14 in the minor conditional use permit, and you would also strike 23, is that right?
Yes.
And then 25 would be to seven, unless there's any language we need to put in there about daylight savings times, but am I understanding, you're okay with seven o'clock year-round?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought, okay.
Seven o'clock year-round, but it would be 10 o'clock on Fridays.
Right. Okay.
I'd second that motion.
So, well, yeah, he wants to know how to reword that motion. If I hear you correctly. I guess the motion would be to accept the recommendations from staff and that we would strike item number 14 from the CUP and item number 23 from the site plan. And then number 25 would be to add 7:00 PM instead of 6:00 PM, and that would be with the wording year-round?
Well, till 7:00 PM and Friday night.
And Friday, and I was going to say, Friday night till 10:00 PM.
Till 10:00.
If I'm understanding everybody's thinking on this, is that correct, Monica?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second to...
Do all of that.
To do exactly that, to approve minor conditional use permit number two and site plan review number 1218 for 24516 Narbonne Avenue, Lomita, California, in the downtown DC commercial zone within the mixed overlay district.
With those conditions that are changed.
Yes, so there's a motion and a second. So Madam City Clerk, if you can do a roll call, please?
Commissioner Dever?
Yes.
Commissioner Santos?
Yes.
Commissioner Steinbach is absent this evening. Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Vice Chair Graff?
Yes.
Chair Camerota?
Yes.
That's five zero.
Okay. That is the conclusion of item number five, so we will move on to item number six. Thank you for those that were in attendance for that. And if you turn your program to item number six, talking about my fellow commissioners. Okay, thank you, Mr. Bookman. Okay, okay, so we are now on public hearing, item number six. This is going to be a discussion and consideration of a Zone Text Amendment 2023-01, amending various sections of the Lomita Municipal Code, title number 11, which is the planning and zoning, to ensure consistency with state law regarding supportive transitional and employee housing, low-barrier navigation centers, density bonus incentives, reasonable accommodation, covered substandard living conditions, as well as the striking of unused existing zoning districts and finding the action to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act or SEQA. The applicant, of course, is the city of Lomita. Presentation would be by community and economic developer Brianna Ringe, if you would be so kind as to give us your presentation.
Yes, so as you recall, on December 20th of last year, we most recently discussed the city's housing element that was formally adopted. And so with that, there's a requirement to adopt several ordinances. Presented before you tonight is not all of them, but presented before you tonight is progress on seven of those 31 programs that were approved by the state, approved by city council as well. In five of those, the draft ordinance does refer directly to the state law because it is, as you are coming to find, changed very frequently. So this just keeps the city in compliance if they make changes. It's been divided up into 10 parts. So first is supportive housing. So you can see in the draft ordinance, if you go to page four of 19, you start with A, you have A, B, C. So in the top left on the slides, that refers to the different parts that that subject is getting changed by in the ordinance. So the housing element goal and requirement of the state was to allow supportive housing by right where multifamily mixed use, it should be MU, I apologize, is permitted, and this is in compliance with Assembly Bill 2162. And so the ordinance does, draft ordinance does exactly that, refers to state code within the permitted use table for our residential zoning districts. Transitional housing, basically the same thing. It's done in B and C in the draft ordinance. Employee housing, once again, basically the same as the last two, to allow, in accordance with the updated Employee Housing Act, and again, refers to state code to keep the city in compliance. Number four, low-barrier navigation centers, a little bit different. It also is a requirement of the housing element per the Employee Housing Act, and it is replace, definitions replaced with reference to the state code. So density bonus incentives, again, this is one that refers to the state code so that the city can remain in compliance. Reasonable accommodation, the city already has a detailed code on this, and the city had a major reasonable accommodation process and a minor reasonable accommodation process, and the state did not like this. They said that a reasonable accommodation request to go before planning commission is seen as a constraint to applicants, and sometimes there are private health matters. So staff does recommend going with the state and only making it an administrative process, not a planning commission process, if there's any reasonable accommodation request, which according to reports, we have not had one in years.
Covered parking, so this one, I'll spend the most time on. The state requires us to remove covered parking requirements. What does that mean? Just that garages cannot be required of any new residential, you know, single-family home, whatever it might be. And staff actually sees this as a benefit because oftentimes garages are just used as storage or illegally converted into ADUs without permits, you know, unsafe living conditions. And so staff does maintain that two parking spaces shall be required, plus the guest parking based on the zoning, the level of residential density that it is. But they can be on the driveway, on the private driveway, located anywhere, they don't have to be enclosed. Yeah, that's in the staff floor, I'm just going to go briefly through this. Emergency shelters, there's a very specific state requirement that the parking should be based on the staff members, so that is what the code proposes to add. Substandard living conditions, this is actually through the code enforcement division of our department. There's a general housing element goal, number two, to improve upon the existing code enforcement program, and staff believes that such a program would do so. What it does is it increases compliance with property owners who may have unsafe, you know, unpermitted work and are having people live in them, renting it out to tenants. And last, there are two unused zoning districts, it's the CSP and the CN. Those are two of the six commercial zoning districts in the city, and nothing has been zoned out for many years. The bulk of the ordinance is removing that because it's referred to in many sections. And the addendum that you were provided actually assists in that, it was overlooked at first, but because it's, the CG zoning district actually refers to the CN and CSP. So those were just put word for word verbatim in the CG zone. That concludes my presentation, I'm available for questions. This is an ordinance that you'd be recommending or denying. You'd be recommending, excuse me, or not, approval to city council, and they would have two hearings on the matter.
So let's go round one with commissioners' questions, Monica? Okay, Joaquin, anything?
No, no questions.
Okay, Michael, any questions?
Just a clarification, and I think you answered it. So no longer do, are garages required? Is that correct?
That is what the ordinance proposes, yes.
I'm sorry?
That is what the ordinance proposes. The parking spaces themselves are required, and they must be the size that they require for the city, but they do not have, we cannot require that they are enclosed. Applicants can still propose garages, though.
Okay, so if you're building a new house, you could have two vacant parking spots in, right next to the house, and not have to have it enclosed in a garage?
That's possible.
Or covered.
Or covered.
Okay, Brenda, any questions?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, hearing no questions, I think we can cut to the chase. Is there a motion, I suppose, since there's no, wait, I'm sorry. I was going to say, let me open up the public forum, and I don't know if Mr. Kivitt is on? Yes. George, if you have anything on this item?
Let me get turned back on. I almost always have something to say in regards to housing in Lomita, especially density and all the things that go along with that. Probably spoken more before this panel and the city council on housing issues than anybody else in the last 10 years. But anyway, I very much disagree with eliminating covered parking for single-family homes. I think that's a terrible idea, terrible. I'll go on the record with that. I do agree with eliminating the CSP and the CN zones. That's just very redundant, if we're not using them, and they haven't been used, just roll them into the Commercial General or whatever you had to mention there. I think that's a good idea. And as far as increasing what I call workforce housing, and I've mentioned this many times before, I think what we need to do is increase our mixed-use overlay. I'd like to see that extended along Lomita Boulevard to our eastern and western borders with Los Angeles and the city of Torrance respectively. I've mentioned before possibly increasing the housing on, not the housing, increasing the height density, the height limit along the north, no, excuse me, along the south side of Lomita Boulevard, because the shadow would be falling into the street versus into, you know, neighbors' backyards and such. I think that'd be just a logical thing to do. But, you know, I'd like to overall keep Lomita, you know, our nice, friendly, family-oriented community, and I think keeping our... And I think keeping our R1 and our A1 communities as much as possible to their present density, I think is a good idea. I know lot sizes have been cut down, various things done, you know, as far as allowing increased density within those areas. But I really don't want to see that overall. And I've expressed these views before. And I'd like to, you know, just thank you once again for listening to what I have to say. Thank you.
Anybody in the audience? No. Not seeing anyone, I'll close the public comment period. And we'll bring it back to the commission. Does anybody have any last minute questions, Monica? Joaquin? Michael?
Just wanting back to the, to the garage thing again. The... Eliminating the requirement for enclosed garages is a city revision, not a state mandate.
It is a state mandate.
It's eliminating the garage, not the parking spot?
Exactly. We are, the state permits jurisdictions to still require the same number of parking spaces. We just can't require that, according to the state, we cannot require them to be covered. I do think in practice, garages help sell homes. So I think that people are still going to propose them.
Okay, so the state has mandated you cannot require covered parking?
That's for residential, correct.
Not enclosed, but covered. Okay, thank you.
Want to make a motion on item, well, actually, one question. There was an addendum that was placed up here before. Did we need to have you review this? Or does anybody have any questions on the addendum that was posted up? There was some language that was additional to...
Yes, if you could please just refer to the addendum that was posted online in the motion.
Okay.
It's just a cleanup.
Right, so I just want to make sure everybody's aware of this as well. Yep, so everybody has it. Okay, so with that being said, anybody want to make a motion to approve item, item number six? So there's a motion by Joaquin.
I'll second it.
Okay. Madam Deputy City Clerk, if you do a roll call, please?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, sorry, really quick. I just want to make clear that the motion is the adoption of the resolution. And also that the motion includes the amendment that's in front of you.
Okay. Okay, and I just want to make sure that everybody had this addendum, yes.
It's actually recommending approval to city council.
Right, yeah, it goes... Yeah, it goes to city council.
Includes the...
The amendment, that's why I want to make sure you guys all saw the addendum, correct. Okay, so with that, let me just make sure we have the right motion on the floor. Mr. Santos, would you do the correct motion? Just make sure it's...
I move that we adopt resolution recommending approval of Zone Text Amendment 2023-01 to city council, subject to the findings and conditions, and to include whatever amendment or addendum we received.
And sorry, just to be clear, it's not a resolution you're approving. You're just recommending approval to city council.
Yes.
Right. Okay, so with that motion, is there a second to that motion?
I second it.
Okay, so Madam Deputy City Clerk, if you do a roll call, please?
Commissioner Decker?
Yes.
Commissioner Santos?
Yes.
Commissioner Steinbach is absent this evening. Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Vice Chair Graff?
Yes.
Chair Camerata?
Yes.
That's five zero, approved.
Okay, item six passes on a five to zero vote. Okay, let us move on. Scheduled matters, item number seven. Discussion on outdoor dining ordinance, Lameda Municipal Code, Section 11-1.68.06.
Yes, so this is a discussion item. Staff's looking for your input or your thoughts on the matter. Staff would like to return with an ordinance that you all would once again recommend or not recommend approval to city council, and then they would adopt it. Post-COVID world or endemic world, outdoor dining has become popular, as you can see tonight. They thought this was an appropriate time to discuss it since it's already in your minds from the last two projects. We do have a certain, a city code. And in the attachment to the staff report is that code with sections highlighted that staff, you know, thought might be outdated or have room for improvement. And so staff is open to amending any part of it should you direct or, you know, have interest in doing so. But with your input, and then we will meet with the Economic Development Subcommittee of the city council, we will draft an ordinance.
Are you requesting us for a motion on that?
Just a rec, just discussion, just kind of...
Okay, so we don't need to do a motion, so unless...
The staff report included some questions to kind of help.
Okay, anybody have any questions, Monica, on that?
No.
Joaquin? Okay.
What is currently in place, what you gave us? Okay.
It was last adopted in 2005.
2005?
Yes.
In your review of what you have, see what's going on and everything, do you recommend any changes? Or are you, what changes would you consider to what, what is here?
Yes, so the questions I posed kind of geared towards those. One is that it's an extra permit to allow outdoor dining. And so this is for private, for public right-of-way, of course, that should still be required as an encroachment into public right-of-way. But for private property, it could just go through the typical building permit process. There's, I don't see a necessity for an extra application unless they come to you with a, you know, variance or other type of request like that, two applicants tonight did. Second is that it is not, outdoor dining is not currently allowed in the CPD district for, I don't know why, the reason. So it's just a minor change allowing it in that area should you direct us to. Third is that the city code currently requires all furniture, so chairs, tables, to be temporary in nature for all outdoor dining. Once again, in the right-of-way, that is appropriate if there, you know, work that needs to be done. But in the private property, outdoor dining, like you see this all tonight, what is the harm in allowing those to be attached to the ground? It might be a nicer, nicer equipment.
For, excuse me, for example, burning daylight with their, on their property, they could attach the tables and/or chairs and be fixed so they didn't have to pull them in and out every night. Is that correct?
Yes, or heaters, that's the other thing that will probably be out there too at various occasions.
But currently, currently, they, they cannot be attached, is that correct?
That's correct. It doesn't require them to be brought in every night. It just needs to have the ability.
Okay.
In the current code.
Okay.
And then is the parking requirement for outdoor dining of 150 square feet yielding one space, is that appropriate? That's not so much a recommendation, but just kind of a question as we saw tonight, two requests with outdoor dining, you know, with, there's some precedence for maybe looking at that number. And then are there any other objective design standards that the city should require? For example, landscaping or something like that.
Okay, so the items that you highlighted on here, are those items that you would consider maybe changed to, or is...
We consider any part of the ordinance.
Yeah.
You know, this is a kind of a modern, modernization of the code.
Okay. Well, the, my opinion is with regard to the outdoor furniture and everything, that they be allowed to permanently affix it. The only concern there is, you know, somebody steal them in the middle of the night. But that's their, at least that's their option, you know?
A lot of restaurants, at least in my experience in other jurisdictions, they chain them, temporary furniture at night to eliminate theft. But you're right, a permanent structure would be less likely to be stolen.
That's all I've got, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Brenda, any questions, comments?
No, I just, I think it's with a lot of cities recently voting to take away the outdoor dining, as some of our beach cities have done recently. I think that it's a good thing. I think what we're striving to do in most of Lameda is to get that gathering back with, with outdoor dining. And normally, we have really good weather for that. This year it's been a little crazy, but, so I would like to see recommending that the ordinance just be for private and public property as long as they don't come and ask us for no parking space. But yeah, so that's my comment.
Okay, well, with that said, my only question would be, have you been able to compare the current ordinance to any other local cities around us? Just curious.
Not yet, that would be part of the ordinance creation.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any other comments, questions, last go around? Monica? Joaquin? Michael?
No.
Brenda?
No.
Okay, let's move to item number eight. Communication regarding city council actions. I don't know if that's you, Brianna, or if that's Laura?
Um, yes, so...
Or...
City council did go ahead and approve the zoning text amendment for both the building code update and the signage act, Kaya, at the Pasern group, as you all recommended. That's all I have.
Okay. Number nine, first of all, thank you for putting this into the packet. It's well received. And item number nine is new and upcoming developments in businesses. And I will say this is very, very, very well done. Thank you.
I will relay that to Whitney Weisberg, our intern.
You can relay it to everybody inside City Hall because we've been wetting this for a long time. And I, I really like how it came out. So, anybody have any comments or questions on this? If not, I think it stands for itself.
I think it's very thorough. I mean, and it's exactly what we've been looking for, you know? It gives us a little bit, a little snippet of what can be given into the future. And it keeps us up to date on what has been here and what is progressing on that. And I think it's great.
Yeah, I'm thinking you might update it quarterly because construction is not a quick process.
Correct, right.
So provide a new update to your...
Okay, I only had one question. I just want to verify, Cavatina Restaurant, is that the one that's down next to LBJ?
No.
Is that the one behind LBJ?
Cavatina is at Ashelman and PCH in the Lameda Plaza.
Oh, inside...
Next to Western Dental.
Okay, all right, I was one...
You're thinking of Good Life.
Yeah, Good Life. And that's, for some reason, I had that in my head. Okay, thank you. Okay, item number 10, staff announcements. I believe we have some introductions tonight.
Yes, we have our new assistant planner, Erica Barbero. She is here tonight and will be probably presenting next meeting.
Excellent, very good, welcome. Welcome, and sorry, I couldn't put you at the beginning, but that's because we have to wait till item number 10, so. Sorry about that, but you're on there. And I believe we didn't get proper introduction of council tonight because he came in right when we started. So I want to recognize...
Our assistant city attorney, David King.
David, yes, yes, it's been a while, so I wanted to recognize David as well. Okay.
And I'd also like to add, the city council did approve an augmented code enforcement services contract and selected Fourleaf. So we have an individual named Jocelyn Rivera, who has begun working, and she's here a couple of days a week, assisting a couple of...
The intern?
No, different person. We've got a team building.
We've got an intern, too.
Yes, we have an intern as well, Whitney Weisberg. I'd like to have her at a meeting doing a presentation or something.
What did you say about Fourleaf? I didn't, I can't, you said selected Fourleaf? I didn't hear that whole thing. What did you say?
So city council approved a two-year contract to expand our code enforcement.
Oh, right.
And so it's a contracted individual who's here part-time.
Right.
And she has begun work as of January 31st.
Oh, okay, okay, that's, okay.
Is she the one handing out tickets after the sweeper?
No, that's, that's different code enforcement.
Okay.
Parking enforcement.
Parking, okay.
I have a couple of quick things if I may.
Pardon me?
If I'm, I have a couple of quick things if I may.
Oh, yeah, Linda, I, you're kind of down in the pit there.
I know, it's so...
I'm gonna start calling you DJ Linda, you're down in the pit over there.
I just wanted to remind you all that starting in March, there'll be no more Zoom option for commissioners. The circumstances that allow it are really strict, and it's kind of done ahead of time. It's not the kind of thing you can just kind of say, last minute, I want to zoom in. And, you know, there's got to be like really serious reasons. And then we have to post an agenda wherever you are. The rest of the body has to vote to allow this. But, you know, it's just, it's not as simple as you're just sick or you're out of town. It's, you know, it's a lot more, the reasons are a lot more stringent than all that. So I just wanted to remind you of that. And with all the hustle and bustle getting started in the meeting, I neglected to read our, our one written communication, which you all received a copy of, but I, our agenda does say that I'll read it into the record.
I was gonna bring that up.
We might talk about that part of it later. But as far as this one, I feel obligated to read it. And this is from Brandy Keith, and she's from the South Coast AQMD. And this was received February 9th. Hello, and thank you to the City of Lameda Planning Commission and city staff. I'm submitting comment today to share our upcoming WAIRE Program Compliance webinar, that's W-A-I-R-E, on February 15th, 2023, at 1:00 p.m. This webinar is a great opportunity for residents, business owners, and other stakeholders in the South Coast Air Basin to learn more about South Coast AQMD's Rule 2305, our warehouse indirect source rule and the compliance requirements for warehouses. Stakeholders or other interested parties can find out more about this upcoming webinar as well as preview presentation materials or connect to our online resources. And she gives a link here. And you can also access our WAIRE Program hotline at 909-396-3140, or email wear-program@aqmd.gov. Please feel free to reach out to me at bkeith@aqmd.gov if, if you have any questions or would like to know more about Rule 2305 and our WAIRE Program resources. And again, that's from Brandy L. Keith, Senior Public Affairs Specialist, Geographic Outreach Team, South Bay Cities, South Coast AQMD. That's it.
I will not be able to go to that, unfortunately, I got a conflict. I've got another engagement between 11:00 and 1:30. So if anybody else joins, hopefully, maybe. Okay, item number 11, planning commissioner items. Let's start off with Monica. Noting no items from Monica, let's move to Joaquin.
Brief, I mentioned last month, but welcome.
Okay, I also had extended my warm welcome to you, Michael.
Yeah, a couple of things. Brianna, thank you very much, I'll say it again, for getting our packages out on Wednesday. Very much appreciated. Just a, I went to the, and it's, quite a few people went to the Pasern, the Kaya grand opening, and I was flabbergasted. That place is phenomenal. It's, it's like a five-star hotel. It's unbelievable. It's very, very nice. And I think, I think they're doing pretty good on their leasing, too. I saw an article in the newspaper, and I was quite surprised. There is regarding to grades of the cities that have been getting with regard to meeting their housing requirements from all the stuff that's been going on. And I was pleasantly surprised of the ones that were shown, which was the majority of the cities in LA County. Lameda is in the top 10% for meeting their housing requirements, scoring Bs and A-, which is phenomenal when there's only like, I can't remember the number, 59 cities in the entire state that are above failing. It was in the Daily Breeze, what was it, Sunday? No. Saturday? Yesterday? Yeah, Sunday.
That was Sunday.
Yeah, Sunday. But it was, it was really, really enlightening. It was, it was very exciting to see that. And the last thing is, do, do we have any more status with regard to these pop-up taco stands? stands? I know the one over by AutoZone has moved, relocated, we think, but what have we found out with regard to the ability of them to do that and everything? I know we've, that one was run off several times.
I cannot comment on only open code enforcement cases, but it is undergoing the process.
I'm sorry?
I can't comment on open code enforcement cases, but it's moving through the process.
Okay, thank you.
You're out of order, Mr. Joaquin.
Yes.
Okay, Brenda?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to the staff, I mean, you guys are phenomenal. I just, it's amazing to me how you put it all together and it make it make sense. Welcome. And I, too, was reading that article, and the only thing I would say is, we did get a D in the very low affordability, we only had one. And I think when, when people bring projects to us, we have to stand a little bit more firm on that end of the scale, just, you know, throwing it out there. But you guys are phenomenal, and, and I appreciate you, and as I'm sure we all do.
They have moved, at least to my knowledge, to Western and Lameda down by Savers, at least that's the last I saw them last week. With Brian on a number of occasions, and he said that code enforcement has been working diligently to try and eradicate that issue, so just a quick update that I know of. And then the other item is, I was going back through the minutes again, and I think I have the right CUP number, it was 322, I believe we had it in November, it was the communication from Miriam about the car wash issues that she was talking about. Did she ever follow up with you by chance?
Code enforcement has communicated.
Okay, so they, you guys did get here from her, and you guys have been, okay, I just want to make sure we didn't leave that stone unturned. Okay, thank you. Okay, let's see, I don't have anything else, what do we got here? Commissioners to attend the next couple of City Council meetings, we have Tuesday, March 7th, and Tuesday, March 21st. Anybody want to jump on one or the other? Great, we'll note Joaquin Santos, we'll take March 7th.
I can't leave the 21st, I have a prior agreement.
Okay.
I can't either.
Monica? Any availability on the 21st?
Steve?
I mean, you could always zoom in, you don't have to go, unless Bob's gonna be there.
Bob?
You know, yeah. You remember Bob, don't you?
Thank you.
Yeah, all right, so I think we're, you could, all right, excellent, thank you. And with that, I, I'm sorry, what's that, Linda?
You're doing the same style as planning, or rather, planning's following suit with how the council's doing it, so the council's still interested in having the opportunity for, for the public to participate via Zoom, and that would include, you know, maybe any consultants or somebody else like that calling in. You guys, if you wanted to attend virtually, you could.
You're welcome. I also, I failed to mention that at the February 21st City Council meeting, they will be selecting a new planning commissioner to join you, so they would be with us at our...
I was about to ask you where we are with that.
March 13th meeting, they would be joining us if they select someone that night.
At the 21st, okay, great. And with that being said, our next meeting would be on Monday, March 13th, 2023, at 6:00 p.m., and I will call for motion adjourned. Second? Second?
Yes, yes, yes.
Adjourned.
Of course.